I now call the May 3, 2016, regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by pressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Thank you. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the April 12, 2016, special council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on April 23, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the April 19, 2016, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune, April 26, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the May 3 bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hiley, seconded by Councilman Miller. Abstentions.
I'll abstain from my mileage reimbursement.
Councilman Powell abstains for his mileage reimbursements. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention noted by Councilman Powell, motion passes.
Tonight we have the opportunity to name a city building after citizens that have made significant contributions to this community. Council will consider naming the new ski patrol building at Hogodon as the R. Stanley and Pat Low Memorial Ski Hut Patrol. Do we have some ski patrol members or individuals in the audience that would like to speak to recognize Stan and Pat Low?
I'll probably get down there.
We're in no hurry, Judge Huber.
Well, I don't even have a good story.
Okay.
It's my privilege to be here tonight to speak to you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. It's my privilege to be here tonight to speak to you on behalf of the Casper Mountain Ski Patrol and on behalf of Stan and Pat Low's family. I'm not certain if their daughter may even be able to be here tonight or not, but, you know, we very much recognize that the city might have some hesitancy in naming facilities after individuals and things like that, but Stan and Pat are truly just exemplary great people whose impact not only, you know, not only had a very, very positive impact within our organization, but also throughout the community, and in Stan's case, literally throughout the state and throughout the nation. I could go on for quite a long time. If any of you are Rotarians, there was a saying, I guess, in the Rotary that when Stan would stand up to speak, he'd say, "Now, I just need a minute," which would always turn into more than a minute, but the Rotary Club had what they called Stan Road Minutes. But, you know, I, you know, we just, we're very proud to have had Stan and Pat as members of our organization. Their accomplishments are just legion, and we thank you for considering this, and we would respectfully ask that you give favorable action to this. If there are any questions or anything, and if any, we have quite a few ski patrol members here. If guys wouldn't mind standing up or giving something for the panel, there's more than just one of us here.
And we, we didn't formally get your name, although we...
My, my, Huber.
Yes.
Nobody wants to know who we are.
Well, Michael Huber is also the Fire Chief for the Casper Mountain Fire District.
Well, I still am.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your kind attention.
Mayor, excuse me. Could I typically just read these resolutions by title only? I'd like to recommend tonight that we read the whole resolution because of the significance of the information.
Absolutely. Okay. And is Chris still going to do that?
Chris will do that.
All right. Anyone else care to speak on behalf of the naming of the ski patrol for Stan and Pat Low, pillars of our community for many, many decades? Okay. The council will now consider a resolution. Please read the entire consent resolution.
Resolution number 16120, a resolution authorizing the new ski patrol building at Hogodon be named the R. Stanley and Pat Low Memorial Ski Patrol Hut. Whereas, a new ski patrol building at Hogodon was completed in November 2015, and whereas this Casper Mountain Ski Patrol leases the ski patrol building from the City of Casper, and whereas this new building provides a safe place where the Casper Mountain Ski Patrol is able to care for skiers in need of assistance, and whereas R. Stanley Stan Low was affiliated with National Ski Patrol for over 50 years and was instrumental in obtaining a congressional charter for the National Ski Patrol, and whereas R. Stanley Stan Low made significant contributions to the Casper community and the state of Wyoming through his service in the American Judicature Society and by sponsoring recreational safety legislation in the Wyoming Legislature, and whereas, after his honorable discharge from the Merchant Marines, R. Stanley Stan Low successfully worked with the State Veterans Commission to ensure the Merchant Marines be recognized as veterans, and whereas, R. Stanley Stan Low was integral in bringing numerous advancements to the Casper Mountain Ski Patrol where he served for many years and was a prominent advocate of the services rendered by patrolers at the ski patrol building. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Casper, Wyoming, that the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute and city clerk to attest, a resolution authorizing the new ski patrol building at Hogodon to be named the R. Stanley and Pat Low Memorial Ski Patrol Hut.
Thank you. The council would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolution just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now address the main portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action, by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas other laws are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for the council to carry out business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent. Council will now hold previous scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue, and then council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the use of program year 2016-2017 Community Development Block Grant Funds. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald dated April 25, 2016. And exhibit number two, the affidavit of publication as published in the Star Tribune on April 20, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, the City of Casper is designated as an entitlement community by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and as such, we receive a direct payment or direct funding of a Community Development Block Grant annually. To comply with the requirements of that annually, the council's got to, must consider a, an annual action plan and adopt that. That's the purpose of tonight's public hearing, is to consider that plan and obtain public input on that. The, and that is for the fiscal years 2016, 2017. The city's allocation for that year is $287,280, and I would ask Liz Becker, the Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director, to come up and provide a few details on the plan and...
Thank you.
...that report.
Welcome, Assistant City Manager.
Your Honor, members of council, I had passed out, as well as in your packet, a copy of the second year annual action plan. There's a little bit of history with this, as well as for our listeners at home. Last year, you approved a consolidated plan, which is a five-year document. Joy Clark, our Community Development Technician, had prepared this. It was a new format for HUD to do this through an extensive online system in which he put the goals for this community into the five-year plan. That also included a first-year plan, and so this year, the annual action plan looks a lot different than we have in the past. We don't have as much photographs of things we want to do in Casper. There's not as much narrative. That's because this year HUD has connected this particular report into the online system that Joy did last year. That way, it ties together our five-year goals and continues to report to HUD how we're progressing against those goals. So with this second year, we then are now two years into the five-year plan, and as Joy had explained a couple of weeks ago at our work session, she stepped through the allocation of how we plan to spend the $287,000, including a new program that she's looking at with sidewalk repair, which I think was met very favorably. So she's also gone out in the meantime and gathered community input, and as she stated, she's done a few different things to get community input. And separate from this public hearing, she had two public meetings. One was at King's Corner, which is a weekly dinner that the church has, and so she's able actually to talk to the population that really needs the services that are provided through CDPG. She also had a meeting up at Life Steps Campus with not only the residents that are there, but also the healthcare for the homeless. And she also put comment and feedback questionnaires on each of the bus and CATC vehicles, which, again, we have such strong ridership. Every year, we use our full allocation of CDPG funding for those bus tokens and CATC tokens. So we know that that is well received by the community through this program, so she was garnering input that way. So that was separate from the other ways that we get input, by placing packets around at the library and community action partner and the housing partnership and the Housing Authority. So we're pleased to get the input in. Again, tonight with a public hearing, any comments that are made from our audience, whether it's in person tonight or even email, we'll incorporate into this final plan and then submit it to HUD. So that's a little bit of the background. If you had a chance, again, to look through it, the numbers are all tying back to what we had set as goals a year ago.
Thank you. Questions or comments to direct at Assistant City Manager Liz Becker. Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the use of Community Development Block Grant Funds to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the use of Community Development Block Grant Funds to please approach the lectern. There being no one to speak for or against the use of Community Development Block Grant Funds, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the use of Community Development Block Grant Funds.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Amendments.
Your Honor, I think this is an excellent time to recognize Joy Clark and all of the excellent work that she has done for this community and the relationship she has built with the underserved members of our community and her advocacy for these folks, many of whom are just making it day-to-day with very limited resources, and it's just nice to be in a position where we can try to do a little something for them.
Here, here. Anyone else? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consider, consideration of the next item will be by ordinance. Please read the ordinance on first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending Section 9.44.030 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to discharge of firearms and other weapons.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Council Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Miller. City Manager report.
Your Honor, that report will be given by the city attorney.
Okay.
Your Honor and members of council, the recommendation of our office is that 944.030 regarding discharge of firearms in the city limits be amended in a fairly limited manner. The current provisions require a, allow the discharge of firearms within the city limits in an area that they're allowed by zone or conditional use, along with a written agreement with the city governing the use of that facility. Arguably, having the city enter into a written agreement with a, say, a shooting range operator could put us in a position of having an obligation to regulate the operation of that range and exposes to potential liability, which rightfully should be falling on the operator of the shooting facility. So the recommendation is that the ordinance be changed to basically eliminate the contract requirement and allow discharge of firearms in an area zoned or allowed by conditional use permit without an additional agreement by the city. And then the other amendments to it that you'll see were pretty much a readability cleanup, taking some run-on sentences and making embollo points that were easier to find. That's all.
Thank you, City Attorney Chambers. Do we all get it? We know what it's about?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, Councilman Hiley.
Thank you. I'm always in favor of seeing rules and regulations changed so that they're simpler and, and, and a little more easier to comply with, so this one's pretty easy for me to view favorably.
Absolutely. Vice Mayor.
Just, I know we all have heard a little bit ago why this is happening, so the audience and the people at home understand, there has already been a conditional use permit issued, or approved, I should say, and this will now allow for the, the construction slash operation of a privately-owned business, which will be building and open for operation, hopefully sometime within the next 12 months, a private indoor shooting range for those of you that like to go pistol shooting. So that's what this is all about.
Good summary. Any, any more discussion? Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the Hogodon Lodge project. Because this has been taken off or never put on consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council, and we'll also invite the public. Please read, well, yes, they signed up. Okay, never mind. Please read the resolution by title only.
Resolution authorizing an agreement with G.H. Phipps Construction of Wyoming for the Hogodon Lodge Project Number 1514.
The council would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. City Manager report.
Your Honor, in 2013, the City Council commissioned a review of the city's Hogodon ski area. The resulting Hogodon Ski Area Master Plan recommended, among other improvements, building of a new lodge. The plan identified the existing lodge as having the following shortcomings: inadequate restroom facilities that was just, that's not sized for people in ski gear and not meeting ADA requirements. The restrooms also do not have the capacity to serve the number of people on busy days; inadequate office space and areas for staff; a poor physical relationship to the ski and snowboard lessons and equipment rentals; questionable foundation stability; the existing lodge was not sized to handle the number of people on busy days with long lines at the restrooms; customers seeking seating for lunch with customers sometimes sitting on the floor. And the kitchen was, the kitchen was very cramped, and related to the kitchen, vehicle access for the delivery of food was, didn't exist, had to be carried in. The plan further mentioned that interviews indicated that the conditions of the existing lodges discouraged users from returning to Hogodon. As to the foundation study, a structural analysis of the A-frame structure of the current lodge identified live, snow, and wind load concerns that resulted in the, in the section of the A-frame to be closed and it not being suitable for public use. Replacing the Hogodon Lodge is expected to remedy these issues just mentioned and improve the services of the users of the facility, including potential year-round use for alternative uses identified in the master plan. Consequently, the City of Casper authorized $6 million from a total of $24 million of unallocated 1-cent number 14 sales tax that was designated for capital expenditures, and allocated that to replace the lodge. A steering committee was established to assist with the design and replacement of the lodge. The final design was bid, and six bids were received on April 6 of 2016, with the low bidder being G.H. Phipps of Laramie, and with that low bid being a base bid of $4,979,000 plus $646,000 of alternates, for a total of $525,000. A contingency of $106,950 is recommended to be added to that, with the total project G.H. Phipps is a Wyoming contractor, holding a State of Wyoming certificate as such. Of the total amount of the project, $4,460,000 of costs are for Wyoming-based contractors. Specifically, out of all the contractors involved, including the general contractor, there are 17 Wyoming companies, eight of which are from Mills and Casper, and that leaves three companies being out of state. And the estimated number of jobs created during the construction on this project is 45. Of the $6 million allocated to the project after contracts for design and construction administration and demolition of the buildings, there's currently $5.59 million of funding available for the project, which covers the, the, the total project costs. And I note again that this, this funding comes from 1% optional 1-cent tax, which is dedicated to capital, is not operating, is an important distinction between the two. Operating is, operating revenue is the item we're contending with right now with our decline in budget, and our primary focus is to address that situation, which pays for the day-to-day operations versus capital, which pays for one-time projects that come along. Much-needed capital, but it does pay for one-time projects versus the ongoing day-to-day maintenance and operations of the city. And so we have a resolution to consider, and it's before you tonight.
Thank you for that very important distinction between operating and capital expenses. Okay. A number of citizens have signed up to speak, and I will call your name and ask you to step forward. Mr. Bob Kidd. And could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Bob Kidd. I reside at 1139 South Center, Casper, Wyoming, and that's one of those multi-generational homes. I'm a little bit stiff and sore. I got run over in a bullfight yesterday out on the Hat Six Road. My advice to everybody here is don't do that.
Don't do that.
Uh, I would like to address the mayor and the council, if I may, on the issue of the Hogodon Lodge, and I would like to just absolutely thank you for bringing it to this point. There are many of us in this room that have been involved not only pre-master planning process, which did bring the issue to the forefront, and at one point, it was probably 2012 that John Patterson attended one of our meetings, and there was a lot of discussion about rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic as we were looking for adequate facilities to continue operations. I had a grandfather that was a member of the city council in 1916. He was a county commissioner for a number of years and then spent some time on the council, so that math is pretty easy. And I have a brother who was a mayor up there in a frame 1971, and whether I'm thanking you or your immediate predecessors that got this ball rolling, or you tonight as a council, it's, it's really time. I was in fifth grade at Park School when Hogodon opened, and I had been learning to ski on the rope toes, and I'll tell you what, if, if you can imagine this community when the ski era was really booming, and Pete Seabert, the developer of Vale, came up here and helped pick that location, we have a real jewel up here, and it gave me a competitive ski racing career that put me in the University of Wyoming Athletic Hall of Fame. What you know is that if you can go big at Hogodon, you can go big anywhere in the world, and I had a great ski racing career. Retired from racing, got married, and I guess it was 1985 when I put my children in Casper Mountain Racers because it was time, and I had spent years in that program before it was CMR. I told them at the time that they couldn't afford my coaching, but I would coach the rest of my life as long as I didn't get paid, and they've been good to their word. So I had... selecting Mountain West Group that came down from Sheridan to do the master plan. And then your selection of Bull Stockwell Allen and Garrett Chadwick out of Driggs, Idaho to be the architects, that was absolutely brilliant. They have been wonderful to work with. Our steering committee has worked for you. We have done everything you've asked. And when it, when it gets into talking about our, whatever they're called, I have a different name for these alternates. Those aren't alternates, those are what-ifs.
Right.
Because, because when we, when we got into the process and we were working with the architects and I don't know how many conference calls we had with them, and I'd like to say thank you to Doug Folick and Alex Veda, they kept us all on task. But we got into the conversation about what if we can't build this thing for less than $6 million? So, these alternates are part of the original design. If we do not include the alternates, shame on us. So, the alternates are not alternates. Those were our plea for some careful consideration if we couldn't get under that $6 million. And we were doing it knowing that if we weren't careful, we would hear from you. At one point during this process, and Mountain West Group might have been here to deliver their strategic plan, I had a conversation with Vice Mayor Charlie Powell out in this lobby and he said it would certainly be nice if there was some community buy-in. And out of that conversation came the Friends of Hogedon. So I'd talked to Steve Cathy and I'd talked to Councilman Powell and, and the city manager and I found out you can't give the city money. So, we have the Friends of Hogedon here, the nucleus that Ray Bader, who formerly filed the papers, Bruce Lambersen and I were the ones hanging out with the Secretary of State. These are some brochures with that nice picture on there. Maybe I'll just hand these to, I don't think there's enough for everybody, but I think there might be about eight of them there. So the Friends, I think we have in the bank over $25,000 right now. And that's hard cash. And we have promises from many other folks and we've been telling them, don't give us any money yet, we need a project. And I hope tonight we are going to have a project and then we're going to raise enough money to totally furnish and do whatever else is necessary with this facility. And the thing I might do is, at this time, if it's appropriate, I, I would like to see the city council match dollar for dollar, every dollar that the Friends of Hogedon raise out of, out of what we've saved you under the $6 million.
I understand and I appreciate the thought, but we can't just spontaneously create a council action like that.
Okay. Well, I, I just, this is a good place to plant the seed.
Okay.
And beyond that, members of the council, city manager McDonald gave the rest of my report.
Right. And, and I will more than happy, more than happily take the credit for this august body from years past. We get the blame, we might as well take the credit as well.
If anybody turns up the heat under this project, send them to me.
I will.
I'll take them out and have them help me work bulls.
All right. Thank you, Bob Kidd. Next, next, someone who signed up to speak is Bruce Lambersen. Is Bruce, Bruce Lambersen here in the gallery?
Wouldn't miss it.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council. City manager. My name's Bruce Lambersen. I live across the street from Hogedon. I never know the address, but I've been up there since 1973. And when I rolled into this town and I've been involved in probably every aspect of Hogedon since 1973. I agree with everything that Bob Kidd says and I guess we sometimes joke that we apparently, I hope, we've lived long enough to see this thing done. And it hasn't always been easy for either of us, but we're here. I do want to thank you and your predecessors for the way this unfolded, the previous administration and the opportunity to do this. And I do want to answer any questions you might have in a moment, but a few things I just wanted to touch on. One is Friends of Hogedon. It's important to note in this budget that there's no FFE allowance, fixtures, furniture, and equipment. Okay? Again, we were scared to death about going over $6 million. And Mayor Powell at the time said, "Don't come back for more money." And we took him at his word and we appreciate that. So the FFE budget became a Friends of Hogedon project. But, as Tom Reader said at the Leisure Services Board, which has endorsed everything we're talking about as far as I know, he said, "People will expect a finished building." All right? We're not going to sit on the floor. So pertaining to those FFE costs and what Bob asked about matching funds, we need to now, if this bid's awarded, look at the plans in detail with the engineers and identify those items which need to be completed with our help. Okay? And hopefully your help. So we can come back with the hit list of, you know, we have lots of ideas, but we haven't been through all this back. So I can't tell you right now. I do know there's no furniture in the dining room and there's some other ideas we'd really like to make to, to dress this place up. But anyway, that's sort of the, 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 the process that Friends of Hogedon will be going through with you and we'll be getting back to you with more information there. What to do with the change? There's got to be some leftover money. Not a lot, but some. And I would venture to guess that's never happened in a city project. Not the one, I mean, we did pretty good on the skateboard park, but that was only 195,000 bucks some years ago. I was involved in that. Maybe I'm wrong, but it's, we're doing well. And it's not that we're geniuses, it's just that we got very, very competitive bids because of the environment right now and we've got a great company to work for us and they're going to employ people and it's going to be good. But, there is some extra money and I would hope that this, the council just puts that aside and lets us follow through with the Friends of Hogedon request in a sensible way. And also, the contingency at this point is really small for a project like this. On a $5.3 million project for, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollar contingency. I talked to Jack Hollinger, brilliant engineer in town, Bob Lower, you probably know him. They have their finger on the pulse of almost every building project in this state and they assure me there will be surprises on the mountain. And I don't want to have to, you know, go through stalling the project or anything. Things will come up and anybody who's built up there knows that. So anyway, hopefully we can just relax, get this thing going and in the end we'll get some money back. I can't say how much, but I think we're, there's some there. We've addressed capital versus operational expense. I get a lot of feedback from people and when I throw things on, you know, my business's Facebook and people go, "What? $6 million?" You know, and, and consistently they've had a few questions for me about, where's the money in the bank? Where's this coming from? The city's broke and, and you know, I have to frame that discussion and let people know. First of all, things have changed faster than probably anybody could imagine except for me because I was here in 1979 and '83 and right through that. I mean, things changed quickly. And again, the capital versus operations, when, when I explain to people that this was surplus a year ago, 30 million surplus from the one cent optional sales tax 14. Council didn't spend it all. Nine million of it, as I recall, went to an operate, an enterprise account. Six million out of the 30 was dedicated to this project. So, that's what that money's for and it's an opportunity now that we can really embrace and it's working out with the bids very well. But, you know, I have to frame the discussion with that versus operations. And you know this, but I'll mention just for the record, that the city operates and spends approximately $140 million a year. Okay? That's a big outfit. We're talking about 6 million from another fund that's in the bank. That's important to us and I think the public needs to realize that. And yeah, things are going to get tough. They're getting tough. You're reacting to it, I'm reacting to it. I mean, but it's, it's apples and oranges that we got going on here. We're not going to fire $6 million worth of people to build the lodge.
Right.
This is another situation. And again, that money was not allocated in any reckless fashion. It was well thought out and a lot of it was held back with that 9 million enterprise fund. So anyway, I think that bears mentioning just so people with questions about it know that. Another thing's come up. Why are you building the lodge when you need a lift? Well, first of all, and it's been come up like next, you know, like I'm going to be here next week asking for a chair lift. I'll tell you why that's not going to happen. I mean, and this comes with the master plan, they suggested some new lifts. That's not going to happen because you don't have the money. I mean, it can't. All right? Nobody put away lift money a year ago. And the other thing I explain to people is, this lodge will be used by the general public at a city facility that anybody can go to and enjoy. The lift is used only in the winter by people who are using it to get to the top of the hill. And frankly, it's an eight-minute ride from the bottom to the top and we can spend $5 million on a lift or whatever it costs and you're going to save 30 seconds. It's not going to really, so the lift is working, management's working really hard up there to keep it functioning. Someday that area's going to need a new lift, but it won't be now and someday oil will be 120 bucks a barrel, I hope. Let's talk then. Let's talk then. But there's no way that can happen. But in the meantime, we have such deficiencies and such opportunities to increase the use of that facility for everybody. You know, grandma, parents, people who don't ski, which, you know, brings up one other thing. There was some mention of the ADA compatibility or compliance on our existing lodge. And I had the unfortunate circumstances where I was in a wheelchair 10 years ago. And through the grace of God and some brilliant medical people and a lot of the things, I'm okay. I'm up there skiing and stuff. Not everybody is as lucky as I was. And through that process, I spent a lot of time in medical conferences just because my thing worked out so well that doctors like to show me around, you know? And the, the VA load that's coming out of not only just wartime casualties, but even civilian casualties, medicine's gotten so good that a lot of people who would have died two decades ago live. But they live with some real issues. And you're going to hear from a gentleman like Jonathan Taylor, but I just want to say, somebody in a wheelchair to go up there to watch his children ski and have to be lifted around to go to the bathroom, to not be able to participate, I mean, as Ray said earlier, this is the 21st century. If it was just the issue of ADA, this thing needs to be built because it's, it's been awful and the humiliation and it's, it's just, you know. So enough of the that, but let me flip it over. There's an opportunity. The VA is dealing with thousands and thousands of returning veterans who have been badly hurt. They need help, they need support. And then there's a whole civilian component too. And programs like this where people could come up and ski and enjoy the outdoors and watch their children and participate in this are really an opportunity and the biathlon club has already shown that. We spoke earlier and you weren't all here when we were doing the biathlon program, but Andy Soul from Sun Valley, sit skier, biathlete, trained on Casper Mountain, went to the Sochi Olympics, the Paralympics, took a silver medal and it's changed his life. And we can have successful athletes training up here, Paralympic type, disabled, whatever. And it's a wonderful opportunity for the town to say we care. And it's frankly, they need food and lodging and everything else everybody else needs. I mean, it's an opportunity to bring income in. So, so, so I'll let Jonathan tell you his story, but I just wanted to stress that. To me, that alone is worth the money for our community. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them and otherwise I'll say thank you and sit down.
Question or comments for Bruce Lambersen?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next on the list of people who signed up to speak is Ted Rasmussen. Is Ted Rasmussen here?
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, lady and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor. My name is Ted Rasmussen. I reside at 6241 South Walnut in beautiful Casper, Wyoming. I'd like to speak on behalf of the lodge, a new lodge up at Hogedon. For the sake of brevity, I'll keep this pretty short. Mr. Kidd mentioned when we started on this project as Friends of Hogedon, this is dated June of 2013, 98 pages. I won't go through all that so we can keep other people some time for them to come up. But we've pretty extensively gone into what needs to happen up there and more importantly, the need with public input. And the public has had numerous opportunities to come and talk, give their input. We've spoken in front of the Leisure Services Advisory Board and we've also had many presentations in front of you folks and many of your predecessors who, some of them have been many, very vocal. But I don't think at any point has anyone significantly raised the thought or opposition to the fact that we need a new lodge up there. It's in horrendous shape and we need to do something. So, I'm not going to go into much more detail other than to address the economic issues of what we're facing, what appears now in the next few years and how this lodge is, is part of that. You know, obviously, you know, it's previous money that we already have in the bank. But I do know the fact that we present ourselves or we're supposed to be presenting ourselves as the adventure capital of Wyoming. It would be hard to do that without a ski resort. And I think that lies into the fact that I feel part of your jobs are to look long-term. It's not to look next month or even next year, but it's five and 10 years from now and what's best for this community. A new lodge up at Hogedon is going to be very good for this community in the future. It's going to be good for bringing people in, for employers obviously, and promoting it as a good place to live, people that maybe want to bring businesses in. It just adds to everything we're trying to offer here in Casper. So hopefully, look long-term. It's a great project. It's been allocated, it's been vetted numerous times at all the levels of the city and with the public. We just appreciate you guys considering it and I hope you vote in favor of the new lodge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments for Ted?
Thank you.
Next on the list is Ray Bader.
It's not to look next month or even next year, but it's five and 10 years from now and what's best for this community. A new lodge up at Hogedon is going to be very good for this community in the future. It's going to be good for bringing people in, for employers, obviously, and promoting it as a good place to live, people that maybe want to bring businesses in. It just adds to everything we're trying to offer here in Casper. So hopefully look long-term. It's a great project. It's been allocated. It's been vetted numerous times at all the levels of the city and with the public. We just appreciate you guys considering it and I hope you vote in favor of the new lodge. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Questions or comments for Ted?
Thank you.
Next on the list is Ray Bader.
Hi, council. My name's Ray Bader. I reside at 3800 Platte Place in Casper. And along with Bob and Bruce, I'm part of the steering committee up there and then also I serve on the Friends of Hogedon. You've heard a lot about what's going on with those two organizations. I also keep the books and records for the Casper snow sports, the ski instruction up there. And I just wanted to briefly go over, you know, what's going on up there for the past couple of years. For the 2014-2015 ski season, we were just heading into the downturn in the economy and that, that ski season, we, the, the ski instructors up there provided just under about 470 ski and snowboard lessons. Heading into this ski season, we're deep in the grasp of the current downturn. So we were projecting and anticipating a downturn in those numbers. As it turns out, by mid-February, we had already exceeded last year's ski and snowboard lessons. So, and we still had a month and a half to go in the season. So there's some credit to be given for that. Part of the credit is due to the director up there and the instructors for providing the quality program they, they do up there. But also part of the credit has to go to the city council because over the last couple of years, they've made improvements up there. They've invested in the, the ski making facilities up there and that has led to a longer ski season and, and a higher quality of snow up there. So even in the, in, in the downturn that we've experienced this year, we've seen an increase in, in usage up there. I think that will only continue if we have a new lodge up there. That'll bring even more people up there and again, you know, more usage for a city facility. So I, I just want to thank you for your investment you've already made in this, the area up there and hopefully with the continued investment that we hope to see up there.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Ray Bader?
Thank you, sir.
Next we have Jonathan Taylor on our list. Welcome, sir.
No, that's all right. It's nothing new. You'll, you'll see that, okay, my name's Jonathan Taylor. I live at 200 Honeysuckle.
There we go.
Hello. Yes. Not, not all podiums are accessible, just like not all buildings are accessible.
Right.
Just to give you a little background about myself, I've, I've lived in Casper since I was in the fifth grade. I've been in a wheelchair for approximately 16 years. I was paralyzed in a bicycle vehicle accident when my daughter was five weeks old and I was a new husband and a new father. And I've, I've always vowed that I would never let the situation that happened to me stop me from doing the things that I want to do. I'm here to talk, as you might expect, to support this beautiful building and the, the potential opportunity that it would give me as a father. I have two children. That, that beautiful little girl that was five weeks old is now going to be 16. She skis on the Kelly Wash High School Ski Team and my son skis with the, the ski team up there. I, I travel every weekend to drop both my kids off up there and, and I wave to them from the parking lot because that's as far as I can go. I'm sorry for my emotion. The most difficult thing about being in this situation is not being able to do the things that you want to do with your family because of inaccessibility. I've traveled hundreds of miles to go ski with them in Grand Targi because they have an accessible facility. I've not skied with them here. I know that for many people, they just look at the numbers. They don't look at the individuals. They don't look at the memories and I'm here to talk to you about that. I, I'm here to, and I hope that you remember who I am because I want to have those memories with my children. I want to ski with them. I want to enjoy what it's like to go down the hill with my children. Currently, I can't do that. We've talked about the accessibility issues and I think they're apparent and I won't speak to those. I appreciate the opportunity, just come here and represent the people that may not be strong enough to come before you, the ones that are sitting at home that want to come out and participate but are maybe a little afraid or they just, like me, they realize that it's just not accessible. There are so many opportunities in our community to diversify our economy and I think that this building is one of the major steps to make that happen. I appreciate the opportunity to, to share these thoughts with you. Any questions?
Questions or comments for Jonathan Taylor? Next on the list of people signing up to speak is Ryan Perry. Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Ryan Perry, 4040 East 8th, mayor, council. In a recent report from K2 Radio said that tourism bolstered Natrona County economy by 296 million, 15.3 million in state and local taxes and also contributed to 2,710 jobs. Last year's, last year's news article said Yellowstone set a new record for visitors for the month of October. Just like the gentlemen's before me said, the new lodge at Hogedon is exactly what my fellow mountain seekers and sport seekers are craving for. But my vision differs in that we need a new lift is paramount for Hogedon to survival. They're taking the old lift, the red one, and putting pieces on the black one to keep it going. And I'm not concerned about going from an eight-minute ride to a 30-minute ride. I just want to be able to have the ride. And if the council could in its spare time, look up a YouTube video called Jackson Hole Bike Park 2011. My vision is in a hope that I could have a year-round pass for snowboarding and mount, and mountain biking. That's all I have to say. Hope to see this new lodge, put in place a new ski area, pretty much. I mean, we all love it. We all cherish it. It's hopefully something good for our economy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments for Ryan Perry? Okay, council, discussion. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to point out a few things. First of all, all the efforts that you folks have put into this and Charlie from Representing Council on the Leadership Services Board and to Doug Folic and his crew, done a great job with this. Come in a reasonable building for a reasonable price and we end up getting a bargain on it to begin with. The other thing I want to bring up is that skiing is a lifelong sport and you hear that time and time again. My children both started skiing when they were probably five and six years old. One of them went through the whole CMR program and coached for a few years, but even before that, he joined up in Buddy Warner's. And I don't remember exactly the age group, but I think Buddy Warner's have to be five years old and I remember packing him down the steamboat and even in the Buddy Warner League down there, they did pretty good from Casper, Wyoming. We have actually had a number of kids from the Casper Mountain Racers go on to the Junior, Junior Olympics and medal in the Junior Olympics. And that's pretty unique for a, a city located where we are. It's, it's only due to the facilities that we have up there that that occurred and the devotion of the coaching team and people like Bob Kidd. We have over 50 public use areas in the city of Casper, including some 40-some parks. We've got three pools. We've got a rec center. We've got the event center. We've got tennis courts plus a number of other facilities. And I really look at the Casper Mountain and Hogedon Lodge as part and parcel of making Casper a good place to live and a home. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Councilman Miller.
Just a few comments on where this is going and obviously a lot of these decisions, and this started long before I was on this council, but the past few years of, of me living in Casper as an adult, I've been up there enjoying the services that we have at Hogedon. And one of the things remains the same. My family's moved around Wyoming a little bit, but we did live in Casper in the 90s during a point. And the one thing that remains the same of me skiing up there then and now is the lodge up there. It hasn't changed one little bit and I actually think there's been some things in it that have, you know, I, I think there is a, a way it's deterring from people using the service. I've got pictures on my phone right now of the buckets placed throughout the floor in there and the roof is leaking. Part of the building is condemned. You know, if we're going to maintain this, like we probably maintain a lot of our facilities. I think we need to push forward and, and put some resources forward on these types of projects. Diversification of our economy, argue what you will. Sitting on the lift up there, I usually try to talk to a lot of the folks going up there. And I, I don't talk to just Casper folks. I talk to people regionally. They all come to Casper to go, come use these resources and they're not just going to Hogedon. They're stopping, they get a bite to eat on their way home, doing all that stuff. My, my family, we're Fremont County folks and when I was growing up in Fremont County, one of our frequent trips was coming over to Casper to go spend time at Hogedon. I think this further promotes some of those projects going up there. I think the ADA, ADA issues are a big concern up there because it's important to get, and that's a trend you'll see anywhere else you go, allowing more people to use these resources. And let's, let's put the, put this effort together and maintain our resources because if we don't maintain it, why, why, why should we even take care of it? If it's, if we have old facilities that are not pleasant to use. And I do want to point out that these are capital funds and I think a few other of my fellow council will point that out probably better than I can. But this is money that if it's not using for this, we're going to be using it for some other capital expenditures. It's not operational. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Disclosure, I, I am not a downhill skier. In fact, as far as I'm concerned, there's two kinds of skiing. There's skiing and there's alpine skiing. However, a couple of the criticisms that have been raised regarding this project is, oh, well, this is just for a small percentage of the population who ski. Well, that's correct. It's also that, but that is also true for the people who use our shooter's complex, our racetrack, our pools, our golf course. All of those amenities are used by a relatively small portion of the population. It's the aggregate total that matters because each of those groups has a passionate following, a group that treasure the facility, and they all need our support. And so yes, this is a large expenditure for a relatively small population of our community. But going back since I think I'm the second longest tenure at this point on, on this council, when I, when I first came on, you really become aware of just how impressive all of our facilities are in this community and the amenities that we have and these passionate groups that you come in contact with who are doing all of these things without much fanfare because they love what they do. But the one embarrassment was Hogedon. And because Hogedon really has been neglected by this, by the councils, previous councils for really ever since it was built. And there's lots of different possible explanations for that, but for whatever reason, the entire facility fell into disrepair, including the lifts. And, and for that reason, we embarked on this planning process about five years ago and I have, I have the spiral bound version of the master plan with me. And that was published in July of 2013, but really the work on it began in early 2012. And of course, the concerns by the people in who are, all of you in this room go back much further than that. But it became very clear as we began to investigate this problem that we really had two choices. We were going to upgrade Hogedon or we were going to close it. It was really, it was really that simple. And, and the lodge wasn't the only problem. But we, we decided at that time that it was appropriate for us to keep this jewel for our community, but also for other people who come to our, our town to ski. And that we have begun on, began that process where we put aside money for a new maintenance building, put aside money for this new ski patrol hut, put aside money for the new ski gun, the snow guns and the magic carpet. And all of those things have been done. This was the big ticket item that we all knew was coming. And yes, it is from a perceptual standpoint only unfortunate timing, but it really is the best of timing because the money was saved when we had it. As Bruce Lambertson pointed out, a good chunk of that money was banked and is still in the bank, but we, we decided to spend it when we had it. And it really is the best of all times to build something is after a boom and in the middle of the bust. When you have construction firms that are struggling, that need projects to keep their staff, to keep their equipment, to keep in operation. And this is a way for us to help fund, help spread some of our funds into those private companies to keep them moving, to keep them alive, but also to get a lodge built at a bargain basement price. And so, and, and yes, yes, for the, for the person who looks at the headlines only and says, well, the Casper's laying off people, why are they building a lodge? On the surface, it, it's a very understandable argument and it's, and those comments are being made throughout the community as we do this. I understand that. But we can't make a vote based on perception. We have to make a vote based on what's best for the community and what's best for the long-term benefit of our citizens. So I'm excited to move forward with this. I was just elated to see these bids come in, under that $6 million and well under that $6 million. And so I think, I think we should all feel good about moving forward. Thank you.
Councilman Haley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just add a few things. First, I want to thank everybody who's come here tonight to show their support for this. Very good turnout and, and, and your support is noted. Especially want to thank the ski patrollers. I'm a season pass holder up there for many years, but I've never needed your services. But I have slipped in the restrooms and we do need to do something about that. Mr. Lambertson shared a very accurate accounting of the state of affairs of the, of the money and, and where it comes from, the capital funds. I think that makes this decision easier. And Mr. Taylor, I look forward to seeing you on the slopes.
Vice Mayor.
Had kind of waited for a while to listen to the other comments. I do thank everybody here from Friends of Hogedon, from Friends of Hogedon and all of the supporters. And the comment that Councilman Powell made about it is the amenities that make Casper what it is. I worked for Big Oil for 17 years. They transferred me here because I wanted to come here because of the school system and because of the amenities. When Big Oil decided to leave here in 94, my family had a meeting and basically we weighed the pros and the cons. The pros for moving with Big Oil because they asked me to move was the money. That was the only thing. The schools were still here, the amenities were still here, the quality of life was still here, which is part of what Mr. Taylor was talking about, is that quality of life with your family, with the outdoors, with doing the things that you do. And contrary to Councilman Powell, we wouldn't have the brain to invent the chairlift if all we were supposed to do was cross-country ski. So Alpine skiing is where it is. But also too, the winter of 92, 93, I was a candidate for the Casper Mountain Ski Patrol and spent 14 years up there volunteering for that program and helping the people. And it's a sense of satisfaction and you watch the things that need to be upgraded and that need to be changed, and this is a very good part of that. And as was stated as well, there are various groups that do various things. I think I've played 18 holes of golf in the 25, 26 years I've been here. But I've spent a lot of days at Hogedon, spent a lot of days on that mountain, and there are a lot of good things going on up there. And so, again, I think this is a very good project to try to continue to maintain the quality of life, to draw quality people to our community. And again, thank you, Friends of Hogedon as well.
Councilman Johnson.
So I learned to ski a couple of years ago because I was never into winter sports. I don't like the cold. I'd rather be at the lake or golfing. But I learned to ski in Big Sky, Montana, and I had a blast. It was a good time. And I thought, well, when I get back to Casper, maybe I'll buy a pass and start skiing at Hogedon. And then I get on council and I take a tour and I said, nope. Nope, I will go back to Big Sky, Montana to ski after seeing the state that that was in. And I think this definitely would not only draw me, but others like me who were deterred by the state of Hogedon. And once we get that place to where it needs to be, then I think we'll see an influx of people.
Okay, I have some comments and a question, just for clarity. My comments are Ryan Perry cited some stats about Neptun County tourism. And I know where he got those stats because I attended a press conference on Monday launching Tourism Week. So it's good of Tom Morton to pay attention and know where those stats came from. And the point that was made in that press conference was that, yes, we're a mineral-dependent economy, but in the ups and downs, how do you ride out that roller coaster? Well, with other industry like tourism, you can actually even out the peaks and the troughs with economic diversity. Everybody knows this, but that is a very important, very important point to make at this time when we are investing. And once again, for clarity, capital funds, operational funds, they don't even touch each other. If we didn't spend this $5.3 million now, we'd just put it into other capital projects. So now is the time. We're going to actually strike while the iron is hot. And Bob Kidd made a very important point in the fact that our engineering and our construction are from Rocky Mountain firms, close to home. They know the unique challenges of our environment and the necessary rigor of our architecture. So that's another thing that says this is on a good foundation. There's a reason you want your engineers from Idaho or your reports from Sheridan or your construction company from Laramie because they build around here. And trust me, the kind of subdivisions that they put in in Iowa do not work in Wyoming. We have tough soils, rough winters, hard wind. So it makes sense that our engineering would be from locals. The other thing is the FFE allowance. It seems to me that this needs further discussion from council. Can the Friends of Hogedon contribute to the project without crossing and pollinating public money with private money? We'll have to explore that, but I think that's a legitimate thing because we asked for participation, we asked for buy-in, we got it, and now we should at least appreciate that. And the concerns about maybe this project could stand some more infusion, well, we'll discuss that too. Because if it's not furnished, it's going to be kind of hard to hang out there year round. And the last question is, was the opportunity fund once in 14 or once in 15?
14.
It was 14, okay. All right. Any more questions, discussions? Do you want to amend in any way? All right, let's have your vote. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye.
Counsel will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 9B1, a resolution approving three-year agreements with Thompson Reuters for Westlaw Book and Internet Law Library Services for the City Attorney's Office. Item 9B2, a resolution approving an amendment to the lease between the City of Casper and the Casper Family YMCA, Inc. Item 9B3, a resolution authorizing a procurement agreement with Sharp Iron Services. Item 9B4, a resolution authorizing an application to the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program for funding to mitigate ground fuels and to install fire breaks along, pardon me, Garden Creek. Item 9B5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Wyoming Machinery Company for the Casper Event Center Emergency Generator. Item 9B6, a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 15259, approval of the execution of an agreement with PIPs Construction LLC for the Steckenhoff Shooters Complex Project. Item 9B7, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Haas Construction Company, Inc., for the Steckenhoff Shooters Complex Project. Item 9B8, a resolution authorizing a contract with Wyoming Eclipse Festival, a Wyoming nonprofit corporation, for financial support of the Casper Eclipse Festival. Item 9B9, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Headquist Construction, Inc., for the East 21st Street improvements.
The council would, the chair would now entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Councilman Schlotter.
I'll be a nay vote on 9B9.
Any other abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Councilman Schlotter voting nay on item 9B9. All others, a motion passes.
Break the sun, go away.
That was for CADA. And tourism, I see Brooke out there. Okay. Council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. These, please read the consent minute action items.
Item 10A1, authorizing the appointment of Compterville Dorothy Butch Oaks and the reappointment of Jeff Bond, Monica Decker, Robin Bromley, and Connie Thompson to the Historic Preservation Commission. Item 10A2, authorizing the appointment of Errol Miller to the Central Wyoming Senior Services Advisory Board to complete the term of a vacated seat set to expire December 31, 2018.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passed.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address.
Good evening, Your Honor. Counsel Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. As you recall, during the discussion on the $24 million excess, number 14, I pushed, argued towards saving all of those funds towards sewer improvements on our wastewater facility. In a democracy, I argued my points. Council chose a different direction, and that's the way that goes. Tonight, I applaud you on moving forward with Hogedon and still think we've got issues coming up with wastewater, but that's for another day and hopefully there'll be money from the opportunity fund for some of those issues coming down the pipe. Tonight, I'd like to clarify though on the low bidder. It's my understanding in the low bid that they chose, both Sampson and PIPs decided to go non-resident. And I'd just like clarification that if that's correct, I talked to somebody that was at the bid letting, and they indicated to me that both PIPs and Sampson elected to go non-resident. And if that's the case, then I'd like to bring just a couple of issues up if that is the case. Is there any?
I'm going to step out of protocol and ask the city manager, is, are these non-resident bid status?
I believe PIPs is a resident with a certification of, a certification of residency. Andrew Beamer, the Public Services Director, about the details of the bids and those questions. I'm sure Andrew would be glad to answer.
Public Services Director Andrew Beamer.
Your Honor, counsel, I'm not sure where that rumor started, but all bidders on this project were resident contractors.
Thank you.
My, and I get that, but my understanding was that for some reason, even though both are considered resident, that in this particular case, both Sampson and PIPs took the opportunity to do non-resident. If that was the case, where that's important, not only in the 5% for a resident contractor, but where really is more important is that a resident contractor would, especially local, you're almost guaranteed they're going to use local subs right here in Casper. If they declared non-resident or didn't take that opportunity as resident, the 70% local subcontractor clause then comes into effect. And they aren't required as a non-resident to actually hire local subs. And then the argument comes as far as the 75% from the Department of Employment using local laborers. I've found now that there's loopholes around that. All they merely have to do as a non-resident contractor is advertise for 10 days, make the specifications, say for a concrete finisher, so stringent in after the job posting that our folks may not hit that, as an example. So that's why I question, I understand the low bid and I respect the low bid, but just as an example, you got a low bid, you didn't, but on the incubator project for CADA that has now been turned over to the University of Wyoming, that out-of-state contractor right off the bat hands a change order because they didn't forecast the delay in the weather and the freezing and the cold in getting the concrete and dirt work done. I think that was an additional, if I remember right, $150,000 right off the bat. My concern on this particular project, both if they were resident or non-resident, is change orders. Who's going to be watching that? Who's going to be monitoring that? Because if the bid specs from the engineering company, in my mind, weren't tight enough, having no real experience on this mountain and with geological conditions with granite and bedrock and unfamiliar with this mountain, I can see change orders right off the bat once they hit in the specified location. And I did read part of the bid packet, and they were supposed to do their due diligence, but it doesn't stop change orders. So I just ask that staff keep an eye on it. I think you've got a wonderful resource with the Friends of Hogedon. I'm not asking them to, Bruce, go over there every day and keep an eye on these guys. That's not, you know, really the Friends of Hogedon's role, but I think you've got a great resource in those folks because they care and they want to see this thing coming in on budget because I think you will be very receptive. If we can keep these costs, you know, in line utilizing this company, and yes, they've built a ton of buildings, but, and Sampson also, they're huge, Sampson is. And I tried to do some research on Delta Construction, but I ran out of time, that appears to be the parent company of GH PIPs. But, so, a few concerns. Residency. Residency, yes, they have a residency certificate. Did they exercise that? Do we have it? And I see on that thing that it says that they checked off residence, but I don't see the certificate in the packet. And the indication I had from the person at the bid letting was that, and I probably am misinformed, I hope I am, and I'm not questioning the ability of this contractor, nor would I question the ability of Sampson. They're a giant. But I think you need to be aware of some of these things, and to Councilman Powell's quotes, yes, we want to put our local folks to work. Am I advocating that we should have given it to Casper? There were a million, better than a million dollars over. But did Phipps take into consideration that some of the loads going up on Casper Mountain have to go up the back way? That road gets closed. So now you have to take into consideration the logistics of those things and get them on the mountain, get them ordered, some of these major beams, get those things and store them, and produce a storage facility that will take care of some of those things. These are some of the change orders. These are some of the things that I ask you and ask staff to keep an eye on, to keep this in budget. And yes, we all want our locals working, and I ask that you take a look at that. I have no bone to pick with Phipps. I have no bone to pick with counsel. I just ask you, keep an eye on this thing so it doesn't get out of control. My opinion is the incubator got out of control, and I don't want to see this go that direction. I want to see money left on the table that we can provide the FFNE, because an empty building does you no good either. So everything I'm talking about, by the way, is legal.
Yeah.
I mean, it's 100% legal. It's just working the system.
Right.
So, and would I have loved to have seen a local, local contractor like Casper get it? Yes, 100%. So would you have. I asked the question, frankly, if it were to be rebid and you were able to come in at 5.3, 5.4, 5.5, would you take it? They said, no, we wouldn't lose the money. And so I just appreciate your time, and we all want to keep things local, especially with this economy, and I appreciate it. The arguments on the funding, and I totally agree that this is coming out of excess 14. But as I pointed out also, and that's water under the dam, but you can use one cent for operations wisely. The Casper, in all of its history, has never used one cent, and it's used it for infrastructure, used it for capital projects, and has done that wisely. So I appreciate that and appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Sweeney, you have my personal assurance that I'm going to be watching those change orders.
Are you gonna put a tent up there?
Well, I don't know if I'll be on site.
Oh, oh.
But if they send change orders, I've already got a note, and I'm gonna watch for that. Yeah, and you're absolutely right. That's how we ride out the swings, is government may be the only one actually hiring people for big projects for a while, and it helps level it out. It helps it from getting even worse. So I appreciate your comments. Questions or comments for Pat Sweeney?
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Dale Zemmerly. I live at 3035 Bel Air. I know most of you, except for the new guy here. What you guys do with making all these decisions is very hard, and I know from my past experience, I made a lot of mistakes making decisions until I turned to God and asked Him to lead me. So I'm gonna ask you guys to consider opening your meetings with prayer and asking God for guidance in what you do, because everybody sees it, and everybody can see the Lord's hand in everything. Some of you are gonna say you can't mix religion with state affairs, which our Congress in Washington, D.C. opens with prayer, our Congress in Wyoming opens with prayer, and down in Cheyenne, and I would just ask you guys to consider prayer. I mean, everybody that reaches in their pocket, looks at the back of their bill, is gonna see, "In God we trust." Let's take that to heart. Let's trust in God to give us the guidance that we need to do what's best for all of us. Thank you.
Questions or comments for Dale Zemmerly?
I'd make a motion if I could, but this isn't regular part of the law.
Right, right. We can't change the agenda. Anyone else care to address counsel?
Keith Rolland, 542 South Durbin. In 2008, I appeared before this counsel and warned them regarding their account that they had for over $100 million and how to invest it, and at that time, I warned them not to buy any commercial paper, risky investments, et cetera, because I thought that many places, such as Citibank, and the holders that issue commercial paper were gonna go bankrupt, and most of the council members looked at me as if they thought I was an idiot. Granted, Citibank never did go bankrupt, but it did go close. And tonight, I'm appearing before you to make a suggestion regarding future government spending by the council. This is the time of the year, I know, when you make up your budget, and this year, you're gonna have to take drastic action. You're currently being supported by construction that started some time before and continues, and also the reconstruction of the refinery over there, brought in a lot of employees from the outside, and they're spending money in the city. The oil, natural gas, and coal companies have not had the full impact of the economy. The price is plunging yet because they hedged last year based on higher prices, and the state is actually getting more revenue coming in than possibly going forward, and you think things are bad now, it could get worse. In addition, companies such as Sears Holding Company is close to bankrupt, and I would not be surprised if they close the Sears store in town and the Kmart store in town after the winter of Christmas of 2017. Also, JCPenney is on the block to be closed. Many of your fast food restaurants that were built up over the last 10 years here, every place you go seems to be a fast food franchise restaurant. I'm sure they do not have deep pockets. I assume that many of them are gonna be closing and laying off people. Therefore, I think in your current budget, you're gonna have to make drastic changes, and my suggestions are as follows. First of all, you need to come up with an A, B, and a C budget. The first one is A, the one that you actually pass. B is assuming you have drastic, drastic negative changes, and the C is your Detroit budget type of thing. And you need to discuss it now, not when all these things happen, because then you have a motion getting involved this way. If you logically take the approach, you know, if it really gets bad, this may have to be on the block, and then you have time to discuss it, not when someone comes in before you and say, "Your revenue has plunged," or "The state has reneged, and we're not getting money next year for this." My suggestion for this year's budget is 5% pay cut across the board. The City Council members agree as individuals to work for $1 a year. I know you get paid, I believe, so much per meeting. I think it would be a very good way of explaining to the public, "We're gonna ask for cuts, and we are taking a cut ourselves, and we're working for $1." You may have to close the bus system this year, keep CATC open. CATC, I would imagine, is closed, and that would be in Plan B. Do not open the pools this year. Start the process of selling the event center. That is a very big asset that you own, and you operated it pretty poorly, to be very honest. You don't maximize away, and possibly someone from the outside could maximize it, and you would get the cash flow. Also, you're gonna have to end the donations that you typically get to nonprofits, such as the Drummond Bugle Corps, that you give money to, other places such as that. I may sound like I'm talking about extreme, but I don't really think the council and the state understands the extreme possibilities that you're going through. I do a lot of work on Wall Street. I've done consulting for different uranium companies in this country some time back. I also do a lot of writing, especially writing on Peabody Energy, that just went bankrupt. I've written about 17 articles on them. And when I talk to some of the members of the board of directors of these companies, I do not think a year ago they realized how bad the coal industry and the oil industry was going to get. Clearly, it is a disaster, and I think the City Council is living in a fairy tale world if they do not think this is going to be like 1985, '84 again. And at that time, you had somebody like Serge Gilia that came in and bought tons of residents, tons of real estate in the city with his capital, and kept the prices from plunging. The question going forward, do we have somebody like Serge Gilia that's gonna come in and basically be your white knight and save out your real estate market? I don't think so. I think you'd have enormous amount of bankruptcy. In your Plan B, you may have to close the recreation center. You may have to cancel CATC. You may have to take another 5% pay cut. Plan C, I have no idea. That's up to you, because that is going to be the case where you are gonna have to do serious layoffs, serious constraints, but the revenue is not going to be there. People are gonna be going bankrupt. In bankruptcy, they're not gonna be paying their property taxes. People are not gonna be paying, businesses are not gonna be, they're gonna be, how can I put it? They're gonna be collecting the sales tax, but they're not gonna pay into the state because there's a time framework where they collect it and they don't pay it, and they keep giving you behind schedule, and all of a sudden, they file bankruptcy. You're an unsecured creditor. You're about class number three on that. Other people are gonna be paid before you. I do not think you understand how bad this is going to be. I don't want to sound extremely negative. I was right in 2008 when people thought I was an idiot when I said Citibank will probably go bankrupt, and I hate to say it, I hope I'm wrong, but if Hillary Clinton gets elected in November, we are going to be in a disaster, because she personally does not like coal, she does not like fossil fuels, she does not like anything, and this is our bread and butter. If you think tourism is gonna bail us out, you're wrong. It's not.
Questions? Comments?
I never left. I was just traveling back and forth all the time. I just haven't had time to come here.
And thank you. I did actually jot down your list of measures in increments of drasticity. So thank you for that feedback. Anyone else care to address counsel? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, Keith Goodenough, 333 South Sacony, Ward 3. And first, I'd like to give you a kudo, because I saw last week you talked about being polite to citizens, so I wore my be-nice t-shirt in your honor of being nice to citizens.
Thank you.
Doesn't bother me personally, if you're rude to me, but some people, I think, are intimidated, so I think that's good. And the way this is set up, of course, you all have the last word in any discussions, and so I hear some things up here that I just think are not accurate, and then I can't respond at the time, so I have to come back and do it another time, and that's part of why I'm here. I believe Councilman Kathy mentioned a 15-year policy of the city buying up any properties that were in the vicinity for future growth of government. And I was here for eight years, and I've been coming back for the last year and a half, and I don't believe we ever had a policy of buying up any building that was within the neighborhood for future growth. And I know that the city has bought buildings in the neighborhood for growth reasons, but I never heard that it was an actual policy. The county had a building at the south of the Justice Center that they were trying to give away, and the city never grabbed that, so it seems like if it was a policy, we would have grabbed that. I know that we had, or the city had a land acquisition fund of $1 million, and that's what was used to buy the warehouse where the 321 Art Gallery and the pizza place is going into, and so there was a $1 million revolving fund that was a policy item, but I don't recall any policy of just buying a building because it was available for the future growth of government. And I know there's dissension as to whether or not the new building and the parking lot are actually part of the Plaza project or not. To me, that's just a matter of emphasis. The parking lot issue, the parking lot was in the city's sights when the convention center was going to go on that block, and that property was necessary in order for the convention center to move ahead, so the cities had that property in mind for a long time. And whether or not you say it's distinct from the Plaza or not, I don't think you could have the Plaza without the parking lot, because people don't like to walk very far in this town, and so if there was no parking, I don't think the thousands of people that are coming to the Plaza would materialize. And in terms of the building over here, you can argue, I guess, the city buying every building that's in the neighborhood, and so therefore, it shouldn't be included in the cost. I don't agree with that personally. And I believe Councilman Powell mentioned that the real cost to the city is only going to be 2.3 million, and I didn't quite understand how that figure was arrived at, and maybe in your final comments, you might enlighten me and others. But you cannot discount or forget the fact that $200,000 of the electricity franchise fee increase went to the DDA, $100,000 per year for a project coordinator and associated costs. So that's another $200,000 that came out of people's electrical bills that went to the DDA. I think that should obviously be included. Plus, the city bought the old Glass House building for $330,000, I believe it was, as part of the convention center project, and so that building had to be purchased to be destroyed for the Plaza project to go forward. So there's $530,000 that I think has to be connected to the Plaza project, if you're trying to get accurate numbers. Then, of course, the $3 million of one cent money directly to the DDA, but I don't see how all of that adds up to 2.3 million. The only reason the state agreed to move out of their building on South David, which they used taxpayer money to renovate 15 years ago, when it used to be raised taxidermy and the Montessori school, they paid taxpayer money to renovate it. The only reason they agreed to move was if they were held financially harmless, and so they agreed to move as long as their costs were not any greater than in their existing location. And I think that's a fact that needs to be noted as well. $7.5 million for construction, I'd never heard that figure before it was in the paper, the destruction costs of the buildings, and still the Ames auto buyout. So I don't think it's been really elucidated where those monies are gonna come from exactly. Moving on to the next point, I saw in the paper today, when they were talking about the Eclipse planning position or project position, that the funding was gonna be for three years, and I don't know if anybody wants to comment on that. It seemed a little odd, since the Eclipse is in a year and a half, whether there's gonna be a three-year funding cycle, so maybe they were not accurate in the paper. Also, I saw that $7,000 was coming from DDA, and my one question I haven't heard discussed either is whether or not the $3 million the city gave to the DDA for the Plaza project, if that can be used for other purposes, or if the contract calls for it only to go to Plaza-related issues. And finally, I would like to point out And finally, I would like to point out that numerous times tonight on the one cent tax, people have said it's only for construction, it's only for capital facilities, but CADA was funded for thirty years with one cent money and that was for salaries and rent and operations. So I don't know why it is that it's always phrased that this is only for capital construction when for thirty years it was used for an operations budget for a connected agency. So I just think that's a little bit of a confusing statement. Plus, I think it's also true that the one cent money is used to subsidize the cost of water main replacements, for example, and that's a mixture of one cent money and city operating money. I'm not sure if that comes out of the general fund or not. I cannot remember that or if it's out of the utility fees. But it seems to me there are construction projects that come out of the general fund that could be paid for with one cent money, which would then free up those other funds to pay things like salaries. So I just think it's a little bit confusing. And I guess that's the extent of my illuminating comments for this evening, just to hope you all remember.
Thanks. Questions or comments to direct to Keith Goodenough?
I know, I hate to have to come back in two weeks.
No, I, I, I appreciate, I appreciate your due diligence.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Two ninety East Magnolia. I wasn't gonna talk tonight, but everybody's telling you what you should do, shouldn't do, could do, not do. I'm not gonna do any of that. I, I don't ski, I don't golf, I don't swim indoors or outdoors, I don't use model airplanes, I don't do any, but all of those things benefit me because you never know, I might want to. So the Hogadon thing, you did good. That's, and one other little thing, most of all, you probably got your property tax preliminary notices and they probably went up a dollar or down a three or four or five or six. And my neighbors went down, next door, went down seven dollars. Across the street, it went down nine dollars. A friend of mine a couple of blocks away went down thirteen dollars. And, and I said about six months ago or a year ago that when I came here and made some of the various comments and presentations that I did, that, that I was probably gonna have to pay for that. I don't know if you remember those comments. Well, I'm paying now because my property taxes went up almost six hundred dollars on a house that looks just the same now as it did nineteen sixty-two when it was built. So my neighbors went down, mine went up. So just so you know, coming here is not cheap. Thank you.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Woody, you can dispute that.
Oh, I will.
Okay.
Six hundred dollars a year, you'll probably win that.
Anyone else to address council?
Thank Keith Goodenough. I forgot about CADA, so.
Yeah.
I, I stand corrected. Thank you, Keith.
Welcome, Mr. Lamont.
Mayor, Councilman. Can I? I, I just, can I see a quick show of hands of who was here during the crash back in nineteen eighty, early eighties? That's good. I just was curious. Did you guys get my photos that I left last week? Good. That, I need to pick up the copies. I made it back, but I, I missed everybody last week. Is there a map by chance that shows all the city-owned properties, including the HUD properties and so forth? That's available? Is that hanging on the wall here somewhere?
I don't, I don't know if it's hanging on the wall or if it's available immediately, but we could probably generate one.
I think it's available in the GIS system, right?
I, I just curious, no, no big deal. I'd like to look at one. I was just sitting back to a rainstorming with myself. Man, the city has acquired a lot of properties down, down through the years and, you know, I'm not questioning that, but I, there's a bunch, you know? Inherited a bunch back during the last, last bust. But I, I, I got here late because I was at the commissioner's meeting, but who's the engineering firm that's been hired for the Hogadon project?
It's, uh, it's in the packet.
GHC. Who is it?
I think it's GHC.
Are, are they a local concern?
I, I, they're in Idaho.
Idaho. How did they get into the loop there, just out of curiosity? Was that bid?
What was the question?
Was the engineering bid separately?
Um...
That's professional services.
We go through the...
Professional services.
Right. Professional services negotiated that.
But who's professional services?
That's the independent consultant that the city hires to do that consulting.
That must have been some time back, huh? Who, who did the architectural work? I'm curious. It's a good, it's a very beautiful building. I just...
Right.
I'm curious, because, you know, Pat really hit on some key issues there, local, 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 local.
Right.
And I was hoping you weren't gonna say, affirm that I'm quite familiar with that's supervising another mountain project that we've talked about before, that I left you the pictures of. So I, I'm gonna be checking on CHP, but I, I would have felt better if it was CEPI or one of those people that are very reputable firms here in town, but perhaps they weren't interested. Bruce Lamerson was kind enough to share with me last night, but the money had already been banked for all this, right? The money's collected, was in the bank, so he, he cleared that up with me and he and I had a really good conversation. You, you guys have known all along that I, I've been supportive with Hogadon. I've, I've made that point pretty clear. I, I, I do have some concerns about safety elements up there. I, I wanna see it used to death, you know, but it's, we only go one way off that mountain, technically, in the wintertime. And, you know, I see conference rooms in there. I, I kinda cringe when I see, you know, governmental entities getting into the, into the conference business. Coming from the private side, I think that's a good deal, so hopefully you'll contract that to some people or more than one. We need a little commercial activity up on that corner and somebody needs to build a nice restaurant up there. They've tried that a couple of times and now the facility, I think, will be nice enough to do that. Needs to be a little grocery store type of arrangement. They've tried that up there too, but I, I think you get enough activity. Only trouble is we're kinda going into a spiral right now and things are gonna get kinda soft, but gonna get real soft. The, enough for Hogadon. I, oh, I was gonna ask, you know, do the prudency of, of the time of, of turning it out for bid. You've saved quite a bit of money from what your projections were on the construction cost. So you're worried about trying to furnish that and the good folks from the Friends of Hogadon are trying to step up to the plate with that. But with that cost savings that you had earmarked, is that gonna be allocated back or can it be? Or are you just gonna bank the money and save it for a rainy day?
We'll see how it works out.
Okay. That, and then the, I, I, I bounced back here. Tom Doyle, the county treasurer, is a really good friend of mine, went to school together years ago. But I, I asked him about three months ago, right after the first of the year, how he was viewing the downturn in comparison to the early nineteen eighties. That's why I asked for a show of hands. He said, Tracy, there is no comparison. He said, it's a disaster in the making. And to hear that from a man that's worked over there counting the money and trying to figure out how to make it work, that's a pretty serious wake-up call. Really serious. So I made a comment last night on a Tribune thread on Facebook. It's very interesting. It's about them looking at, trying to, down at the state level, putting a tax back on food. It was never-ending. But I made a comment, I said, good Lord, suck it up and pull, you know, tighten up the bootstraps, quit spending money. Your common sense tells you that. I don't think a lot of people know that the severance tax monies, that isn't free monies, it came from the industry that Bob and I made a pretty good living out of, out of the extractive industries. Same group that Steve came from. That's gonna tighten up like crazy and they're still spending money like drunken soldiers down there with that. I, I, I got a question. You know, on the conceptual drawings of the Plaza, there was a nice big building in the background. And, you know, without flying furniture there. And I would have to assume that was the planned conference center at one point? Is that scrapped now? Because frankly, I thought it was kind of a good idea, maybe not the location. I thought maybe it looked better out here where the Amoco properties were, but is that still?
What essentially killed the downtown conference center was it was too much public money.
So is it done though and that concept is gone?
We're entertaining the possibility of a privately owned conference center.
Yeah, in that location?
Not at that location, at the Parkway Plaza.
By the Parkway Plaza?
Yeah.
Fantastic. The, you know, the reason I was asking is I, I'm really concerned after I read the article about the possibility of selling the parking lot to the state. That, that really, you know, and I keep abreast on community fairs really close, you guys know that. But I was surprised the state had snuck it in there and why, why do they wanna build a building in downtown Casper? I don't get it. They can go right up here on properties that you guys have and have a never-ending area that's real close to the office buildings they have rented over here by the Planetarium. But if you're gonna do that, what makes sense is for you guys to stay in the real estate business and build a parking garage and rent to the state. Don't let them own it and you end up renting back from them. But I'm throwing a red card down on the fact that that's gonna be a good deal for the pizza place and the art center and they can park there now. That doesn't make sense. So that and one other thing, or just a couple. I, back to the twenty-first and Wyomvola Vard properties. I read that article with DeBish Now brought it up and, you know, Mr. McDonnell, I'm gonna ask you at the next meeting to find out whether indeed that gas line is alive or not. I don't, I think it's abandoned. I don't think it's there. So that's not an issue. We need to keep taking that one off the table. And we, we need to try to get that property swapped with the reeds. We need to find them something. Okay. A major one here, the slash pile. That's good news. It got burned.
It got burned.
There's still stumps up there, though. It needed to go somewhere. I did before they torched it, two days before, came down, talked to Jolene, had a nice short visit with her, Jolene Martinez. And she said that the contract had been canceled with seventy-one construction to haul the rest of the trees down. I don't know if you're all aware of that or not. That's a major red flag that went right back up the pole again. Evidently, you have enough trees for the river restoration project. I went to the Park Steering Committee for the county. They still think you guys are hauling the trees off. So we still have a major fire hazard sitting right in the corner of that biathlon range. So I need your help. The mountain folks need your help. We need to get those trees all off that mountain, one way or another. We don't need to be burning our mountain down. We don't need to be burning Hogadon down or anything else.
Have you talked to the county about that fire hazard?
Pardon?
Have you spoke with the county about that?
I did tonight. I, I run out and walk them over there. They told me I was childish, so, or one of their members did. You know, I'm just proactive and call it like it is. Let me look right down through here real quickly. I think I got it all. And, you know, I, I can't thank you guys enough for your professionalism. You allowed this gentleman to come up. He made a wonderful presentation. He put a lot of thought into that, you know, and I don't think he's too wrong. I'm not a doomsday thinker at all. I'm proactive for safety and, you know, trying to save our mountain, different things in the community. I'm a pretty logistical, common sense thinker. I make a lot of people mad when I talk once in a while and say something, but that's just the provocative side of me. I, I, and I'll get together with Mr. McDonnell on this. The, the specific number that you guys are paying to the biathlon ranges is six hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-four dollars. And as near as I can tell, you guys got a, an invoice from the county back on ten twenty-two as billed to the city government for a hundred and seventy-nine, a hundred and seventy-four nine twenty-nine fifty. That's the first installment that you agreed to pay them. And it's kind of interesting here, the Biathlon Club submitted an invoice to the county, but the county, and that was on October ninth, and the county didn't invoice you guys till October twenty-second. And the Biathlon Club, it appears to me, got paid somewhere around the eighteenth. I don't know when the checks got cut, I'm looking at the voucher. So I, I, that results in a balance of, of four hundred and sixty-two thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty cents. And I, I've already asked you and suggested that you freeze any further spending with them until that engineering firm, Ingrid Miller, and the Biathlon Club, and the contractor, Wayne Coleman Construction, and the county perform to what you guys' agreement called for here with you. You passed a resolution, I believe, on that. And that's, that's hard-earned money.
It, it is, but...
That you guys collected. And if, if it isn't taken care of any better than what it's been so far, I advocate you take that money and put it into Hogadon.
Duly...
Or the bike trails. Or buy some, some rightaways up there, get that bike trail done. Thanks for your time.
Okay, duly noted. Thank you. Anyone else care to address council? At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. Councilman Schlager.
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Miller.
No report, Your Honor. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins.
Nothing to say.
Councilman Powell.
Just proud to cast that vote for the Hogadon Lodge. It was a, this was a watershed moment for the community that we were able to do that. And sir, in response to your remarks, we have been tracking our sales tax revenues very carefully ever since the drop bottom started dropping out in January of twenty fifteen. And so some have accused us of being naive or, or ignoring the, the trends and we are not. And I think you'll see that in our budget preparations for the upcoming year, that there are some very serious measures being implemented. And I hope that you are wrong. We all hope that you're wrong about your scenarios, but we all understand that those are real possibilities and that we need to be prepared for them. And so this council has been watching the budget figures very carefully and we have a budget report that comes to us every two weeks. And Mr. McDonnell has done an excellent job of taking some serious measures, including the most recent one, which is the early retirement program. And there's been a very significant reduction in the number of employees that the city has, and that has already taken place. And we will probably see that trend continue as we go through this process because we know that the worst-case scenario may in fact result. In response to Mr. Goodenough's question, my calculation was fairly simple. We bought, we bought a building, the Lenhart Ferguson Building, for appraised value. We, we donated three million dollars to the Plaza. And because the DDA was successful in, in purchasing the state office building, those employees needed another place to be and the state agreed to enter into a lease agreement with them. the city for seven hundred thousand dollars to use the Lenhart Ferguson Building, which in effect, in effect defrays our cost, that three million dollar cost, and, and moves that down to two point three. I do stand corrected, however, on the AdBay building because we did purchase that several years ago, and that is, in fact, part of the plaza plan, and I did not include that in my calculations. I do, I do take the position that the franchise fee that we are using for the DDA support is not about the plaza. It's about, it's about, uh, strengthening the capabilities of the DDA as we go through the, as we implement our strategic plan, the first goal of which is downtown development. You need a strong DDA to do that. And so, um, I do not connect those up with the plaza project. I do not connect, connect the Plains purchase. It is only, it is only, uh, connected to the prop, to the plaza by its timing. And other, and, and, and had it come up at a different time, we would have probably purchased it then. But that is a long-term project where we're purchasing land without a specific purpose, much as forty years ago, I think it was forty years ago, the city, uh, purchased land north of town that now, now has the event center and landfill and the Stuckin-Half shooting complex. I'm sure none of those things were all planned out when that land was purchased, but they became possibilities when our, our predecessors did so. And, and I think the Plains is, purchases really similar to that. So that's, that's how I came up with the two point three. So those are my remarks.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
Too much. Just a couple comments. I mentioned this at the last meeting that we had had a couple of weeks ago, and part of it is, is that although that we can disagree and we have times that we should disagree, what happens is, is when we butt heads and we don't get anything accomplished is when gridlock happens. And so conversation, I've said this about when Woody's come up here and I, and, and my sentiment is even for Mr. Goodenough, who I appreciate that he does come here and do that, although I disagree with him on many occasions. What it is, is about open dialogue. And if we don't have open dialogue, then we end up with happening in Washington DC, which is gridlock, and nothing gets accomplished. And sometimes it's not fun to listen to people coming up here and talking, and, but it's about that dialogue, and that's an important aspect of American democracy. And that has to happen, and has to continue to transpire. And so with that being said, it's an important part of it. And, and so I do appreciate that, and I appreciate when people do come up here, including you, Keith, too, so.
Councilman Haley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've only been on the council short while, but I've been paying a great deal of attention to budgeting, to our sources of funds. And, and I've listened very closely when, when suggestions are, are that, you know, in the past, we've done things differently. I did, uh, just wanted to say, uh, you know, tonight, we, we did not differentiate well between an estimate, an estimate of a cost versus a budgeted amount. We had an estimate that the building of the, of the Hogadon Lodge would be six point three million dollars, and we actually committed five point three million tonight. There's been money spent for architects and engineers, uh, to the tune of, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars. And there was a budget of six million dollars set aside, or that's the money we set aside, not six point three, but six. In the end, uh, we're fortunate to have received bids at five, uh, five point three million dollars, because by the time it's all said and done, we're likely to have spent the six million dollars that was set aside for this in the one cent fourteen. I, I think that's a, a good point of clarification for, for people to understand. So unfortunately, Mr. Lamont, if you come to me and you ask us to, uh, build a grocery store or a restaurant on the mountain, that ain't gonna happen. That's not the city's business. And, and on the, on the subject of city-owned properties, you know, they become assets to the city when we purchase them. And, and you suggest, well, we spent three million dollars for the Plains Furniture Building. Well, that means that we have three million dollars worth of assets. It's not all gone. It's not all money spent and, and disappearing. The city can sell the properties that it owns just as easily as it can acquire properties. And, and after looking at an inventory of the city properties, there might be call to sell some of them someday in the future as a means to supplement our income, and, and that wouldn't be out of order. So, um, I guess those are my comments and observations from, from tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
I was just glad to see the Hogadon thing go through finally. Moving forward with the Eclipse, the Eclipse Director funding, which was a sixteen-month job term, not three years, just to clarify that. But that's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
Rodeo's coming in six weeks. Tickets are on sale. And as it turns out, over the weekend, the Casper College rodeo team wound up winning enough events that they finished second in the region, so their entire men's team will be coming to the rodeo here. So that was almost a miracle to bump Gillette out of second place and move Casper College into second place. So a big, uh, big well done to the Casper College rodeo team.
Your honor, if I may, one more. Yeah. Thank you. Councilman Powell.
I did forget to say one other thing I intended to say. Our appreciation to the CACV board for taking the lead on the Eclipse project, and Brooke's out here, and please extend that to your board. It is appropriate, we believe, but it also takes pressure off of the, the city to organize an event that really, I believe, is appropriately handled by your members. So thank you for taking the lead on this, and, and I know you folks will do an excellent job.
Thank you. Um, well, I have been representing the council and the city in a number of events. Opening remarks for the Colorado Wyoming Tourism Group. Opening remarks for the Association of Chiefs and Police, of Chiefs of Police and Sheriffs. A proclamation for Tourism Week slash Day. The actual tourism day that we proclaimed is May fifth. And, um, did, did I tell the board about the, the housing opening remarks? Okay. All right. So I've been representing. And, um, I do appreciate your cautionary words because, and I've made this point to the commissioners as well, is you don't really know the, the depth of the financial downturn until those properties start going fallow. Then you have a real idea of just how bad it is. And that's, that's a two-year delay before those numbers start rolling in. And by the time they're rolling in, it's, it's almost too late. But I, I differ in my opinion, and I know you have a lot of financial expertise, but I don't think it's gonna get that bad. But I appreciate the suggestion of having a budget A, B, and C, because that is, that is good planning, and I, I believe that City Manager McDonald is, is thinking along those lines already, just using different terms. And he has mapped a, a course to spin down reserves and to keep the city's lights on and services provided. Because unlike companies, the city of Casper cannot just pull up stakes and leave town in an economic downturn. Government still has to provide services, and that's a unique challenge. And so that's even more reason to have your financial matters very well-understood and condensities in place. So I appreciate your comments a lot. The next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at four thirty PM Tuesday, May tenth, at May tenth, twenty sixteen, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at six PM Tuesday, May seventeenth, twenty sixteen, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passes.